Today for the record, we have a public hearing scheduled for 5:00 PM. And as stated in the guidelines, this is required under BLONCO data titled 17, Chapter 12, Blon Academy Charter School's Act of 2009, Section 12106d, Public hearing. No later than 45 days after the petition to disband Blon Academy Charter School is filed with the Council. And no later than 30 days for a petition to convert an existing school, the Council shall hold a public hearing on the petition to gather the information that is necessary for the Council to make the decision to approve or deny the petition. As of this evening, we will start as stated. Ms. Selly, as for the record, can you please let us know when this was publicized?
It was publicized on January 31st and February 5th.
Thank you. With that, we will start first with Business and Technology Academy Charter School. They have petition for to enter into a charter school. May I please come forward? And as you come forward, we ask you to state your full name, who are linked to this particular petition, and find if you're in support, maybe we just wanted for the record, or if you are opposed. Okay, do you state your full name?
Well, good afternoon, Ms. Selly and Council and everybody else that's here. We appreciate you accepting our petition to be heard today. And just wanted to say that the business and technology came about 70 years ago as we were heading in the middle of the pandemic.
Mr. Todd, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I did not.
Thank you.
My name is Walter Todd. My background is in aviation. And as I mentioned earlier, however, the school started off, the year the school started off 50 years ago as we were in the middle of the pandemic. And folks from the aviation industry were trying to figure out how to find solutions to the lack of workforce in aviation career field. And so we got together with the Department of Labor trying to come up with certain apprenticeship programs that would help our folks here to get into the career field of aviation mechanics or even as a pilot. And so as we were working on the apprenticeship program, we said to ourselves, we also need to start planning the season early. And how do we get that started early? And part of that was we started looking at business and technology with the emphasis of product preparation, readiness, among those career technical skills for our students here in Idaho. And how do we prepare that? And so that's how we kind of started all these years to get a motion on getting the school, kind of made the school start it. And so with taxi, the help of all the other, not privately helped from the other school, but because they have made the groundwork on the charter school, it kind of made it a little bit easier for us to start off high school charter school or get our petition going in high school. A lot of work. And so that said, I actually came here and I had a staff of body speed runners and I had to get rid of all of them because they were using her as a lot of stress. I figured I'd go back to my encyclopedia and then I checked it with my Google. And so I just want to say, because there's a lot of hard work when you pull through and feel like that is a struggle together, or a struggle together. And I'm thinking about this, this whole blurb from Philo Guzido, the things we had in the arena. And so, and it is not agreeing, not a banner, two points to the house, four points. Though when a worker eats, could have done it, the credit belongs to that, could actually deserve the arena. And so I know that people scared the beauty of it all. And it's just a work, and just for that to be possible. Want to go into the seasons of function again? I'm into more of their variables and she.
I thought you were right.
You, you, and I'm right. In fact, I don't even know what this video is for, but for you to be able to add, I'm not. But you can, you can look around. The film I can look here, like started off insanely small, converted to a charter school, only a little bit. So we know that the charter school had a lot of potential. Maybe, and indeed that, just like the charter school that wants to do its solution, to not just to receive it here while the whole aviation side and also the environment, providing the environment for them to be the same here today, to see that facility is pretty nice. And so kids are here wanting to learn. See, you know, mom, mom, iron. And so we wanted to make, as we detect, we wanted to see the openings on several things in this town. To elevate our kid in high school, our children, young adults, in a day ready for college, a mother goes, the basic fundamentals, the building math, reading comprehension. And finally, they have, when you were out 2 years ago, taught me the sectors of business, one of the challenges we have is folks are having a hard time writing in a little place. We see that today in the government where very few are having a hard time with their books. And so that's why we wanted to focus on that. And then we also wanted to focus to those that are funding that to teach you the means also in business, technology, math, reading, and writing. And so we said, okay, if we were developing careers out of things going to aviation, in fact, we have, we have a lot of time on itself with ID. So that we provide also pilot training program, scare cop channel program. We have the nursing field. There are some who's going to there. So we started looking at stuff we had in extra in fields. So that we see, we have a place to see. However, we didn't include in the fields that they walk aside to use in the field, give adults that in our program, they can actually do that as, as they, as entry levels, you would, as you all know. And it's there and out. 70% of kids started as an O85 classes. That's really high, 70% started O85. And so that's what, and so I'm, it's intelligent. It helps us to help us elevate that, to improve that. And so that's a reason to concentrate in the math, math, reading, writing, and incredible. How do we do that? And so here, I'm gonna say we have four points. One is having those who are committed, buy off from the academy. And this is good on the helping, those that are extra anxious in high school. And then how we navigate them through high school so that they can succeed. You do understand that there's families that have the mom and dad. As though, so would you prepare to apply that support for grandpa, grandpa or daddy that might need that assistance to help their child succeed in high school? As they, as they, as they continue while they're in high school, we want to continue with the data so that we can now easily navigate the, so that they can successful in the soft or in the senior year. And then our third point is they're successful when they graduate. Not just graduating from school program, but also be graduating, be successful in the workforce or in college or higher education. And then our fourth is to bring data of what happens to them after, after high school, what happens to their child. And so why, why send it to us, data is very important? Because if we've been always changing our programs so that we can better hear our kids for high school activities. And so that's the technology portion of our school. To start collecting the data. The beautiful side of our school is we have one desk. This is kind of fine. We are, we both know that, so everything is contained to the child, to the teachers, and to the school itself. And so that said, Dr. Juan Flores, he's a secretary of the board of subject matter experts in aviation. Mr. James McCollis, he's in our vertical committee. He's subject matter expert in technology. We got, this is Joe Mesa. Isn't that, he's okay around. He's kind of very focused outside that we're here to support us. But he's a subject matter expert. He's also here to technology that hasn't been running in mine. We do have a professor that's a lot of road potential. I'm sure that's motor, her expertise in education. We have Rupi Mananaki, who's a chief advisor to most aviation area guys, he passed 757. He comes, and so he's an architect. He's a subject matter expert in flight model region. I'm in the technical operation. And so I have very solid experience in the game of engineering, game of safety. And so we have different subject matter experts who make our programs successful. And so with that said, I have to open up to my other colleagues here. I don't want to leave it because I know the ones who have full focus.
I just wanted to go with what I was, I appreciate that. My name again is Mike Smith. I'm an entrepreneur, but I have two, I have two degrees in technology, business, and I think the base was competition. Two titles in 01 for you for visiting Blon Academy Charter School. I also have working relationships with each of the charter schools that are here in the room. I can support it since with the technology side at their schools. And I thank them for this. Part of really want to thank the Council for having this meeting and allowing us presenting what was the third pathway as we mentioned as well, who was coming from the towards. It's just, of course, you know, our work. I'm not all the way. I'm a father of babies, a father of six, so he's better. And so I just want to make sure that every stakeholder, so grandmother stakeholder, and then business person in terms of hiring, looking at the next generation, more coaching development, so forth. The order on the ground of the BTA, I'm a supporter, all of these charter schools that are here today. Thank you.
My name is Juan Flores. As the chairman, I'm the secretary of the board of this technology charter school. Also currently with the Department of Labor. And I bring that up because along with mentioned in terms of the construction of school is a reason involved from the position of the businesses and from the position of employees. So we have a great need to work on the first level product in a very concrete way. One of the things that while businesses are clear, they are definitely working on people, definitely needing people. There's also a need to make sure, pay attention to what's actually going to be the lifeblood of our company. Nobody's going to be able to raise a family upon our crappy little job. And we want to prepare young men and women to either get college education or to get certified in a field that's going to help them develop their career. And while the need is there, it's moving out. And we have a lot of concerns about most of the time in public education, as I mentioned, we want to be part of that solution. It's different from running the whole school system, but that one school that we're proposing may be considered a negative, you know, that. But one, may I probably just focus my comments on something that I believe in very strongly, and that is, you know, where's the problem happening? Or that's, or maybe in the, in the learning scenario or something. That, 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 that needs to be. Obviously, the first idea, you want to make sure that nobody walks out of a school without a good preparation and reading, writing, and that. And businesses are pushing that that's inadequate as far as space, space area. Those are skills that I think they can apply in business. One of the ways we want to do that is to develop courses, develop our teaching, so that those classes are contextual. So we teach reading, the concept of context of business and technology. We teach that because it might be needed by a client, might be needed by a property, or it might be needed by somebody in high school. We want to make sure that those students walk out of school with some lifelong skills, including financial passion, financial literacy. Those students obviously have how to set themselves out of that. We want to make sure that those students in the school, or even go in front of either renewable people or large school people, or even some of their peers, be able to communicate that. We want to, we want to focus on offer condition. Sorry to interrupt you, Jesse, not the world. We saw very cold that entrepreneurs are, those who met those systems, who were food, never had that before. But they came up with a way to meet their need, right? People who develop the food trucks on entrepreneurs. Because that might have started, because we couldn't go out and. But the point is, every young person should make that right. That if they need to go and be involved in business, they need to think of how are they going to develop their own businesses? And how will they, you know, businesses? And the final thing that we want to measure is what career path these young people take? They might start out as a certified assistant assistant. But then eventually you want to become an LPM. Then eventually you become an RAP. And then eventually you become a professor, a university. But they should be able to have a path that they can then follow. We want to make sure that their employees can be really strong in any areas and prepare them for, for just getting the change. They can do different things if they do the technology to do that. And as I mentioned, we want to get you following students after they use it. And if we're not demonstrating these things, then we need to find out why and create changes. Because that's what many students and their parents, but we will find out why. We're going to do it in ways that as we talk about for turning in education upside down. There are very few businesses for anything that's live in the classroom. This thing is one person tell us to do. Why do we keep doing that in our classrooms? We know from COVID that students do better individual learning online. We do know that students work well in small groups. We do know that students can deal with projects, that they can figure out a way to go and find the resources to learn what they need to learn. We want to teach them to do that because that was happening in business. And and the main reason to focus on this is technology from my perspective is the business community is the core of technology. Without it, we would not be in that, in this technology. And we know that every single day the involvement with technology, not only what we do, but it what we learn affects us. And shouldn't our students be involved in getting ready for that? Young people often receive $156 million from the Vipon Center Infrastructure Law. We don't have the workers to implement that. We've got to figure out how to do that. We've got to figure out how to make sure if there's an industry that needs work, we've got to provide it. If there, if there are young people who are struggling to figure out what they want to give away, maybe you can draw out a help. And that means we can't just sit in classroom. There's got to be out in the business community, operating this yearly to the students. And we need to make sure we give them a chance to get it right, whether it is a quality and whether it is a.
My question here, Dr. Flores, is well, that is not the intent of what you want to do, is to take a proactive approach? And if that needs to be done, with the school taking students to business, is that, is that the goal? If that is necessary, is that what you're doing, what you do?
See, the, the, I think the line of school should be more close for Muslim countries. Why do we do this in the first place? And if every single day a decision's made because we're worried about whether young students are going to have a way to develop their computers, then we build around that. Then we focus our efforts on that. So that that becomes, we're not, we're not kind of, we're not proposing starting a school just for the sake of proposing starting a school. We want to make sure that we're going to have measurable outcomes. We want to make sure that all our decisions, including the following of a budget, is going to go with some.
There's, there's statements, why they say that we always generally remind ourselves. And I don't know, I think the way the other supporters have been. We want a charter education of Santa Ana. I hope he doesn't think that I'm a Santa, I'm a Santa because they want to happen, but that's for him. And we want to get an international school in public school, that charter school. And we do that. I believe so. You could take, you could take a child and elevate them better than where they're at today. And, and I think we have, we have to, we have to take knowledge to do that, and we believe in that. And that's why we're here today. And so part of it is when you say we're going to take the child to the business or bring the business to the child. There's going to be, of course, there may be some strict guidelines. The mentorship, having every business register, mentorship program so that we, we, we ensure we, we run the, whoever the person has to give safety to the child, and want to make sure that the police records, all that, this stuff is being vetted out. And then have a check of what we expect the child to learn before they, and that business, not just we gave this child and put them in a training machine, or put them in a Xerox machine and say, okay, they want to learn how to do the practice. And so there is, there is now this structure to all of this so that we didn't result, we want, and then, and the people's money are accounted for. We want to be able to go back to the others asking, what do you should do with our child?
And they know how to do that.
And, and, and it was easier for us to ask. And I say this to some people, and I'll say this above if you, if I can do my job, I'll step away because you know why? The only skin I have in this game is to give our children the best education we can. I don't have more this thing in this game other than that. And I, I, I need to step forward so that I can compete in the education of the child. And so I'm going to go away, I'm going to go home, invest, or move away. And so that's my commitment. That's my commitment to the school. That's my commitment to the child. And that's my commitment to people that want that is going to be funded with school. Is this, here, when you take the child to business, that is such an older tradition? It's the old term of tradition? Yeah.
It is, because, but it has to be very vocalist.
Okay, the other one is if you play the connection when you have checklist, I mean, if you're this one, it's Xerox for how many hours above a coffee shop, AI, computer, AI. But, but what, so yes, there is going to be a checklist of what we expect. So the person who ended up getting down, so they're coming through. Definitely be part of those that is, you know, they have some bookkeeping, training, those kinds of stuff versus didn't, you know, the Xerox machine. So you're not going to see something that you need and I'm going to program Zalbee, and the person can spend X amount of time on the Xerox machine because there's no benefit. And the mentorship program today is actually something that's on you. The nursing program today, the nursing program. When nurses are MOG or G6C, they go lots. So they are certainly mentors, not everyone's a mentor. And they have a check, not really the program. We're just going to take this now and put it into our program with a different discipline.
Question, I know you're married, but I can have a concern. This is a high school, right? Tech will be high school, so we're talking about grades 10, 12, and 15. Okay, so what support is your school going to show for the, for the students that are coming in, let's say, in the eighth grade? And they will have skills and knowledge in reading, math, mathematics with Taylor one, reading math, and science. So what support are you going to give those kids? What are they going to be coming to not knowing any of this? Okay, they're going to come straight from another school. They will have a, the necessary skills that they need for this. How long is the support there?
I'm still with the big question. Well, the first thing is that as a petition, petition manager, where those students start off, you will give them the assessment somehow to determine the level of wish they're able to fall into game, especially reading, writing, and mathematics. And if they are, and it has to be in a way that will almost predict that the night maker starts, that night maker is going to be in the building requirements graduation by their 12th day year. And then, and if they, they would think that they might not fulfill those requirements, we don't wait until the spring of their senior year to say, hey, you're not going to that age. We should start that the right way. It may include us funding, funding after school programs. It may be a way for us to fund a summer school program. It may be a way to say to the student, listen, you're, most students are taking six classes. You're going to take four because you want to focus on these skills. We want you to be not just sophisticated, but we want you to be competent in these areas so that you follow the track instead of being. And then again, that has to be purposeful. So there's a term we're using, and we put it in the section on instructive, but it's really more of a last one. We want to develop a program called Success Navigation. I would say anyone with that name, actually, for the community college in Washington State. And the other thing is every student will be assigned and involved in that. It might be the student, it might be a teacher decision, might be a teacher, might be the head of the school, might be the chair of the board. That person is responsible for identifying whatever is going to get in the way of that student succeeding. So if there's a barrier to that student success, including what happens to the student at home, what are we going to do to help that student? Do we have to make referrals to public help? Do we have to make referrals to our own professor to the school? So we get middle of barriers, but maybe not completely blew that. Like, how do we help the student overcome that barrier? We have, we have too many students in our schools. We know this. Too many students in our, in our, in our special. And I'm not going to say it's fully true in the public space. There are too many students in our school that are crap and they can't really be in their high school at all. We, we don't want that to happen in our schools. We want to make sure that we find out early on if they need some, some skills development, that we are focusing on anyway. And make that priority. We also mentioned in our petition that there are ways for students to earn their credits, right? So for those students who are exceptional students, why do you put them in courses of the OOG, just to butt up better? And how do you earn credit salary? Because if they learn better than high school, but they're also earning from the college. Because if they learn better than high school, but they're also learning at the college level. Why won't we give students some kind of credit if they decide on the student case of the course online? And then certify it internet secured? Why shouldn't we give them credit for that? Because it's something that shows that confidence in that area. So we don't restrict the general blood out is in the four walls, uh, between the four walls in school. But we make sure that it's competitive, reflects what the students can do and what they know. But to your question, because I mean, we need to make sure they identify what they need right out of that. And yeah, it might sound like, yeah, you're brave. All our students are getting graduated in three years, right? And they're all going to be A plus students, and they're all going to have happy, great. But that's that's the dream. And that's the thing, actually, it's not a reality, it's only a theory, but it's not potential is there. Our obligation is to make sure you develop every student's potential.
Thank you. So any questions, perhaps?
Okay, question. I'm excited. I get, you know, I follow charismos that are here. But uh, again, I think some fellow, the older next steps. Uh, obviously, because of our schools shows the relief that, that again, we're uh, we need more help with that. Uh, and so, as I said, at the White Cloud, some folks have said, you know, our life in business here, uh, high school is going to make. We know there's a lot of us, shortage of writers. A people like that, again, because there's certain right, and said, we're giving them some support as well. And our business, our, I don't know, so. Do you, or share? You know, and that's probably why you get repetitive, or maybe none of us, none of us imagined if legislation. Because of, because of the stash. And I feel like we is the reverse of what you're saying, you know, because I I told you, folks have come to, uh, you know, uh, schools, they go. You know, and just like, just like sports, they're very, very, I mean, uh, soccer is a very example of, it's very dangerous, you know, um, those, you know, all the way up. But we have some sports are very rampant in the younger teens. And then if they regress, there's there's none of them. And so they're having to see the goal of five eleven. We're seeing now, people going off five minutes for their education. Now, there are alternatives. I'd say, again, um, I writer, my senior analyst, in nine, I think, came out of St. Paul's, graduated through GCC. It's a little, uh. Asked me for a bill, it was done without plonkings. I mean, yeah, I mean, and the research is always, it's all done. Uh, it's certainly, it's not a five minute. But it's not a variety. These are the things that I'm, I'm not sure, we're afraid of them, fire, you know, because I, I, so I need to, and I need to, you need to work for me. Not how it used to be done before, man. So I like that. So we're producing great students. And I, I, yeah, I think, like, that, you know, there are folks, folks that are living on us. A little body, and because, um, you know, they get to high school and, uh, one of those to be able to, the students to be able to. Not only have you saw a while in college, can move on to vocational schools, but also maybe because of founding these, they're straight into workforce. And that being said, they need to to build their skills, they need to have, you know. I want to tell you, this is how it's got proved. One of the reasons why we have shortages of, uh, uh, home safety officers, we need, uh, uh, police, you know, whatever, that's a G P or or, uh. Or the others. Again, a lot of these, a lot of these applicants, prior to even going into the A G S, the the. The initial application, the U A, they're not passing any. They're not passing the initial exam to get in the B, against general knowledge, or so. And the ones that are counted are not passing how. So they're getting their best of what they have. So what's that sign? What's that day? So, and that is why, um, you know, my, the police department, I said, we have the money, just enough people. Because they can't pass these exams. And it's not their exam, it's not their police exam, but it's entry, the U A stands. That doesn't roll well for, you know, I was out here, I'm glad, you know. Me, seriously, uh, on, you know, I'm actually happy because otherwise, we wouldn't go down, my gosh. You know, the, the, I mean, you know, various examples, who does that count on the there? And so, yeah, see, I, I, he doesn't use graduate from from here. I'll see, but, uh, and so I'm very supportive of my, my, a lot of the, and 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 the charter school, you back, you can give that, so. That's why I'm not sure you need to charter. I mean, you know, next, they want, let's say, you're in Mexico, again. You know, I'll try schools, so a lot of them didn't work either. I think a lot of them didn't work. But the ones that do. Yeah, I mean, I spent, I think, oh, two thousand and more there, yes, yeah. So, 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 that is really good out here. And I'd be able to, it's really good out there, right? So I want to reference whatever this you need to do, and you can count on me as supporting your causes. And the the, you know, what you're asking for, is more, you know, I look at it as, so I mean, you guys, that's the people that are taking our children. That's been our children, whether or not, whether or not they stay on island, and both are great, they stay on island. At least whenever, wherever they go, we're sending off for a lot of citizens. And they'll be stuck to citizens wherever it is that they they call home, because eventually they're going to come home anyway. You know, so with that, thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there any class that would like to come and speak in support of? Business technology? This is. Is he a game?
Uh, please, and chair. My name is Alvin Anthony, I'm the O S D, personally, going to make that team. Uh, I am excited in support of the opportunity for the business of the job, the uh, our school. I think I'll do in respect to the work I've learned that has been here myself, uh, because a lot of the research, I think, I think we have things to do. I support that idea, and the whole team, we're in our team. It does a great team that that is there. A lot I heard, um, I heard that we don't have enough, so only, um, maybe we have, what we want to do, uh, that's. We don't be corporate well, but we heard your case, I think, to do this. Not because of money, but it's because of what we we did, we're sort of wrong. So, you know, we thank the senators, we thank the Department of. Opportunity they've given us, we hope we start our school. So with this new vision, with this new, uh, again, passion, you know. New group of people, business, education, I think, uh, it is, well, we did. Once I, I obviously work this.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellie, is there anyone that signed it for the, I'll owe you.
Not a lot of support. The name is Paula. Wait a minute, that's your mind, please.
I'm just moving this.
On the foreground.
All right. Hold on, the safe word.
I apologize, somebody else.
No one else. So we are no one for the record, we are no one that's here, and that's not in support to this. Uh, if there are any other questions in common, this is the time to deliver before we move to the second on our agenda. I just want to, yes.
I need one more question, please. I'm looking at the South of Sepe, off of Sepe, and P G, but a lot of them, and they're both. And this being, are, and people in the number, you're in such a long conference. And Steve stands, and maybe you know, well, they're, uh, part of labor. I might be a question about apprenticeship, and he was. I just think it's kind of issue with education. I just think we're, um, managing his only benefits for him, he don't matter, but he he, he not that. The damage can afford it, it's not a bad, for that, so it's an option. Everyone in this room, I'm really, I can be concerned, you guys are asking questions. You can raise your hand. I just wanted to just do some, I wish to reach back to your back shoulder. And just give yourself a half on that, of being here for the lady charter school that love you. And you know what? As a, now a chairman for Pacific Power Corporation, for seven years. Long, it's always a fair, we're into those GPA, and it's always fair in that, I mean, uh. Thank you.
Mr. Long, please, the last page, your comment.
My name is Ron Rebelles. I'm the, uh, director of, um, planning alliance research at CBA. And, uh, just a quick question, I haven't had a chance to see the, um, application, um. But I wanted to ask, as a potential, um, teacher school for for business technology, that has, um. Um, and for planning purposes, we'd like to be able to close the board, uh, for the, like, Jay mentioned. And, um, I'm, when, um, was planning to open up and to have a location ready to set up that we can actually use. Uh, you know, advise and tell them, like, what we do with the other, uh, chance to move career day. Kind of open it up to our fellow junior schools and see how we can combine your team to kind of present. And you know, support each other in that respect. So is there any information that you imagine you would provide, uh, with that? Uh, yes, uh, we should, and so in our petition, we did, uh, put in our petition for building C N F. However, uh, we're trying to be very aggressive in in getting this school started in this school year, over one million. Uh, so that means a lot of work, uh, C N F. So we do have an alternate site, uh. Currently, uh, which is Sassy Teach School, uh, which you have the main in, uh, our upper, and the incentive. And so, uh, again, those are all going to be the result of this, uh, this, uh.
So I didn't, I'm fully aware of this situation. And, uh, they did ask their first option because it requires a lot of work. And, uh, there's certain option, uh, they were already making offer to Sassy. It looks, as soon as the council approves it, and we review it, and have a work session, it goes before the Congress Center. We will move forward if it approved, then the ground will be Sassy, because they were ready to set the order.
Well, great, very nice. Thank you. And then to being a fierce, like, about the office and business staff, to, uh. Uh, concerned about, he said, oh, for me, the main part, and says, eventually, you would like to have a working day. That will eventually, uh, spread out to the middle school, so that we could give, uh. The result of what we're seeing in the high school, so that each kid can turn around and actually, uh. Adjust or or make some improvement in the, in the math, in the writing. Same thing to us, we would be reaching out to the GCCs, to the, to the U G, to find out how are the students that are graduating out of our high school. Area of, and the entry exam. And so that we could then adjust and, and part of all of this, it's a bunch of data collections that some of these are always. Uh, putting in and doing, because that's where we could see, you know, right, numbers don't lie. And so, uh, that's what we, we focusing on, so that we can have this communication, so that we can have successful children. You know, in 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 middle school, to high school, eventually, that's good. Be over to the elementary, because the elementary is, we don't need to, uh, to be, uh, there, so. When we say, we want to turn education outside now, there really seems about turning it outside now.
Well, my, I mean, uh. I know that, uh, I know that the presentation bar, uh, also, uh, very tedious and long process, and sure, uh, uh, very. For, uh, we will, we, you know, we, uh, we promised that, uh, for the two, three years, fortunately, the third year. And then we get, we were extended another year, and then they came in at their final grade, they passed from us. And so, very proud of our team, great effort, uh, put together. And again, uh, we're doing safely now, uh, getting ready for presentation, I'm planning to make five presentation. And that'll be, we're fully credited, but additional, which is three years, we want for activity, uh, for the final year of presentation. With a lot of track, I'm sure, well, you know, excellent job, we appreciate, but we've been doing. My question again is, um, I know that it takes two years before you give a live, maybe quarter, about meditation. In the two years, our eighth graders will be, um, if if I give your school, they'll still be excited very. By then, you should have a reputation which allows them to proceed to, you know, college for pursue, whether, uh, their path they're taking. Is that in five, three years, or two years, still?
Our petition actually calls for us maybe that, outside, in the first year. We're going to start by by approaching Konya. Uh, and one of the reasons for approaching Konya is they're a, they're, they're very much structured on a needs assessment and improving process. Uh, Konya used to be advanced ed, which I'm involved with before. And the reason for choosing them is that their experience is not regional. But they're, we, their, their experience is actually, uh, national and international. And if we want our students to be recognized outside the law, we want them to be recognized in a way that someone's saying, oh, we know that expedition. Uh, and and that could have an effect on students, even as being to my role in the military, that they have to be from a, kind of, a different institution. So if that would start, it may start, uh. And then, there's a problem with the side is that the petition would be a clue. When the legislature approvals to be a goal, they'll underask for, when the legislature gives it to the, the, uh. Uh, something that, I mean, we need to get started, and the legislature figures out that this is a gateway, should I stop there?
Well, you know, if you're not, if you're not, if you're six billion, but, uh, I have to give it honestly.
So we're not, uh, now we're just.
Yeah, but I think our initial two hundred seeds, I mean, uh, could benefit from getting that started right away. And that, that's something that I need, uh, you know, accreditation, while accreditation is is a point thing. Uh, I, I need to express my bias, that accreditation agencies benefit from the schools, right? And then the school benefit from the accreditation agencies. That should allow you to focus, because it can be, the students may attempt this, right? And and you got to make sure that even for a parent that you don't, that any of those students there are. Uh, because all of our schools are non-credit. All of our schools are credit, right? That doesn't mean our students' J A T, so that, so that's, I'll agree with you, when you got the attention to a accreditation. You just have to be, be ready, hoping about what like, this is.
And this is the largest student, it's not a matter of little, just, is, uh. Once you guys get to know us, we're very interested. And, uh, I mean.
I'm a trust, maybe, we're aggressive, people are the trust.
I know, I know.
But, but, so, I'm wondering, yeah, we're also, inherent to this is we're also working in an apprenticeship program, GCC. Yes. And so part of this is, we know that, right now, because the high school hasn't yet, uh, started. We have, we have interested folks that want to go into aviation today. And so we're, we've been working this documents before the time, with GCC, a good apprenticeship program, so a lot of folks that. That are, and so that, if I didn't really decide, we just, we want to do, and now I want to do aviation. We're able to help that, uh, this school, uh, so we, we, we're not just, it's, we're not, we're doing that, this is a fresh, so the other folks are, we give the opportunity. I mean. Because we, we see a lot of folks that are from the law that are aviation and land. When I first started Calm Down, years ago, uh, we had to recruit folks from the Bayman. To come here for three years, gave them a top feeling of the third year, to renew their tag, because we couldn't, you know. Now we know with us, we get the aviation, we have one, two, three, four. These are all folks from the United today, that are aviation FAA certified mechanics. We have pilots that are basic one, that is five seven, five seven.
We have no kids go through flight school on our own. And so back to that, we have our passion and it's, I take pride in our local people. I take pride in, because you know what? I like to be proud of nations. It's very worth it.
I'm not your education, but I mean...
I like to brag, I like to brag about our kids. I like to brag that our folks can rely, he's better than them enough and you're so, right? But I, I like, but we have, we have a pilot for Rota, captain of the seventy seven, seventy nine airline. I love those things because we have, we have good technology here. We have kids are smart, we just need to help, motivate them, make them hungry, right? And so...
Sorry, but...
Don't be bad.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate, um, we may have a work, one more work session with the council because this is when we get down to the nitty gritty, unfortunately, because when I, so when Dr. Juan Flores asked, okay, to fight for this, fight for that, that's where I come in. And I sit before this legislature to fight for the supplemental and for the dollars, which is a reality. And so when I, when I go there, I have to dot my i's, prospecties, because they come horrible. And so if I have the numbers and I, then rest assured, I'm gonna fight to have, if this council approves business and technology, then it will be our duty and responsibility to vote before the legislature and to get your money. Okay? So rest assured. You show us the numbers, give us the data, give everything detailed that we can ask us on our work session, and then we'll move forward and, and move for the book. Okay? Is there any other concerns with regards to this? I want to thank you for being here. I know it wasn't easy. Um, I, you know, Dr. Juan Flores, my higher friends, he emailed me every single day. He emailed me sometimes fifty times a day. And then I had to, I read it and, and I, and I know Dr. Flores is very passionate. And then I said, Kelly, okay, I need to know this because I, you know, Mr. He was, he was saying, Mr. Tab, I need to know who we're gonna deal with because I need to prepare ourselves for this. And, you know, Mr. Juan Flores was saying, the time you know this, and I know how he is. So when he did this, I was like, okay, let me get my public law to this title. And I said, okay, did they pay their fees? So we can move forward. Once that was done, we, we took, and we had to do this right away. So rest assured, you, you will get a response by the end of the month from, from the council. Okay?
Appreciate it. And you guys will respond, uh, very quick, and I'm sure...
It's just very important to do that.
To do that, you know, that was your invasion. My, my father, Loa Francis, who raised us before the war was a certified Pan Am captain. So... Actually, more of a, yeah. We, we, so when they, uh, this is just a harsh story. Go ahead. No, it was, it was before the war. No, no, but, but let's say harsh story. I didn't say the topic story. But when I first started in aviation, a lot of the folks that left, uh, Pan Am, Guam, we went to Florida and all that. So Mr. Flores, Mr. Flores, Jose Flores, those folks, they all came to back to Guam. So I was, I was fortunate to work with them for maybe a couple of years before they actually retired. So a lot of Pan American, uh, folks, um, in the end, so went to Miami, they, and then they returned. Some, a lot of them came back to Guam and retired. So, well, my father alone never left because she tried hitting her goal. But yes.
Thank you so much. Happy good evening. Thank you. Okay, so as we stand in our public area notice, we would like to have Sipa come before us. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Anyone else from Sipa would like to come forward? Again, good evening. Thank you. Before we start, I would like to state that when, when you speak, please state your full name, your, you know, and state what you do for Sipa. Just wanna say for the record, under the public law, the Guam Academy Charter School Council has three powers. And the three powers that are mandated is first, the petition, the second, the budget, and third, the accreditation. And so with that, we want to say again, this is a requirement for the council. And so, um, I am proud to say that as, when I was vice chair for the council, we did an accreditation for the Guam Academy Charter School. And so with Sipa being here, uh, and this year it's going to be five or six? Six years, full accreditation, right? Because of the situation. But go ahead, please state your name and, and then we can vote for Sipa with this.
Good evening, councilwoman. My name is Dr. Anthony Saka. I'm the officer in charge of Sipa. Uh, so I sit here on behalf of, uh, for, in support of our application for renewal for these six years. Sipa has been, uh, operating for about four, six years. And in those initial years, it was tough, uh, like I said, starting school takes dedication, takes the right people, and through a year, they've grown from ninety nine students all the way to right now, three, uh, four hundred and twenty students. And so, uh, the students that we do graduate have gone through, uh, our school system as well and we, uh, FPA, CAPPY, and even some of mine have succeeded in, in the path that we have chosen. The successes are always going to be seen, um, in all our personally. So I'll make it short. I, I, I believe in your support and sense for, uh, we truly believe that charter schools are a means and one, we provide an alternative for, for our children. You know, I came back to Guam, um, after working in parts of companies for ten, twelve years. But I came back to Guam because it's my home. The kids here are children that I do. So passion we have for our kids. So I send their support and I hope that the charter school will, charter school council will approve our application for renewal for the next six years. We do have many, um, yes, we have, we have a lot of plans, uh, looking forward. And with the new charter school that has applied there is that community of relationships between all our charter schools. And when we have that, with community and difference, we will only provide our, our kids with the best education, the best experience as a, uh, good, for this experience. I trans force our, you know...
Thank you. Good luck.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Claudia DeLeon. I'm one of the members of the board of trustees for Sipa. Um, I'm also a parent of, uh, my kids have graduated from Sipa. So I do hope that he, um, approve our application for the, um, accreditation for Sipa because, um, I am a testament of how Sipa molded my kids. And, um, right now they're high school students, both of them harvest, and, um, they're doing well. Not just, um, in terms of their academics, but also as members of the community. Thank you.
I'm Jill Akta, Sipa's head life director and manager. Um, I'm in support of requesting for renewal of our charter because there's lots of many good things that speak school that we provide to the students. We, we have over four hundred students. This is our second year participating in double I double A D sports. We have over a hundred fifty of those four hundred students participating in sports. And with our measurements, it has elevated, um, all of their academic scores because they're motivated to contribute and challenge in a new skill that they haven't been able to compete in, especially since COVID kept a lot of them indoors. So I hope that anyways it's improved. We have lots of big plans for Sipa and the sciences, the technologies, uh, engineering, math programs. Hopefully going into healthcare because there's a lot more that we can offer the students moving forward. Oh, thank you for that.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Mr. Vero, Mr. Vero. And this is my first year at Sipa. So my background is, uh, paid in, uh, academics and, and I paid in each social studies and English for, paid for nine, six years. I've been with the Jesuits in Nanam, so I'm from Nanam, so we, we know the standards in Nanam. And I want to bring the standards here. So I, uh, I've been fixing the academic, uh, portion of, uh, of Sipa and making sure that every view has been updated. And, uh, and it goes with the mission of the school, which is, uh, we are, we are, uh, developing the skills for the students who scheme. And later on, uh, we feel we scheme. Since science, technology, research, uh, and then engineering arts, and then, uh, and then mathematics. Okay, so, uh, okay, we are very, for, for this year, um, we are very, uh, so sorry, this is my, this is my first language, but then such, so, so it's like a pressure for us. So we are very active in, um, in going to the next, in ascending, in ascending our, our student skills and then in ascending the standards as well. Okay, so we have a lot of, uh, plans, even when it comes to expansion. So right now we have six, seven, and eight. Maybe we want to expand fourth and fifth. Why? Because we want to use, uh, scheme early.
Repeat that for the time.
Four, five, A and M.
Right.
Because we want to use scheme early at the students. And then later on, we will have, we will be having also, and I can, uh...
Thank you.
Again, I'm Juan Rovella. I'm the director of finding, uh, compliance and research at Sipa. And I guess, uh, again, from the very beginning, um, it was only me at that time. This was in twenty sixteen. Um, I remember that very clearly that, um, Pastor Paul Pino started, uh, helped start Ireland. Um, was looking for ways to be able to have a feeder school for their elementary Ireland. And because of that, um, we got to, thinking was a great team that came about. And, uh, of course, uh, Dr. Jay was available. Dr. Pierre Camacho from, uh, retired from the University of Guam, uh, Home and Education College there. And, um, and so on. There was a lot of other people that were involved here. And from that point on all the way, uh, till today, we've been able to, uh, start from a very only ninety nine students to four hundred and, I, I think our highest was at four hundred and thirty beginning of the year. And everybody started migrating back to the, uh, to the States, uh, where at about four hundred, a little over, more than four hundred and twenty. And consistently, uh, progressing, not only worries, a lot of, now, a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, students are actually trying to build their application very well early. And so we're very happy to hear that. And so with that said, uh, there, again, there's still struggles, uh, in terms of finding, uh, teachers and be able to do a lot of things that we'd like to do, but that's just part of it. So we, we press on and we'll support the council, the legislature, and of course, uh, the community at large. We are able, and the community here at Sipa, we're able to forge on and then be able to create a path that we feel will be one beneficial to the students moving forward in whatever we're having, we're looking for. So happy to hear that business and technology is along the lines of what we're looking for, being a feeder to them. And so again, uh, and the, and the parents that are here in support, we appreciate every, um, everything that, uh, they do for the school, whether it be just calling or, most important, their students eating here. And I think that's just a testament to the trust and the, um, honor of being, we are humbled to know that, uh, they're here to trust us and do good with their kids. So thank you very much for that. And I'd just acknowledge two other people that are, not three other people that are here. Uh, so you know, Dennis Abon, who is our, um, administrator of academic affairs. And we have, uh, Mr. Christian Alengary, who is our student, uh, counselor. And our chief of, um, IT, um, Mr. Joel.
Sir.
Chief of, uh, operations. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Administration. He used to be the chief, he's the one that's up, uh, the IT. And he's the one that's doing all the live feeds and everything, Mr. Joel. And, um, I think that's about everybody here. And, um, again, thank you for, for accepting our application. We hope that there's any further questions.
I do have questions and then, and then I'll be clear. My first question is because you have the intent to expand. Please keep in mind that if you do have that intent, you've got it, you know, a year prior to, because I have to prepare the Guam legislature with regards to the funding, and then we have to prepare the datas. And once you do that, then we, we can move forward with it, with your expansion. The next question I have is in regards to the accreditation. Will that affect your accreditation? Will you have to notify them prior to of this, of your intent? And will that affect it? That's my question.
I'll, I'll, I'll answer the first one. The first one regarding the, uh, the expansion. Um, with that, I, we, we are definitely waiting to be able to hear. We have a draft, uh, prepared in terms of plans and everything else. But we'd like to make sure that the council has time to review and have all their questions, um, ready to bear for us. We do have, uh, and on our part, we do have everything that we can think of, that we can, you can possibly ask us. And how we plan to address, uh, facility and everything else. So if, um, with, with that, I think academics, we will follow, and Mr. Guerrero has a little information, uh, more information than I do, uh, with respect to, we usually have fourth and fifth, uh, and then nine and ten. We don't want to do a full, uh, the full elementary and a high school. We just want to prepare people coming in, uh, students coming in, and the students going to high school. That's, that's all the intent.
Okay.
So, and we will be doing that shortly now. So we will follow our inquiry, uh, that way.
Correct.
So, uh, in, 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 in a year or two years, uh, we will follow that. Yeah, we will ensure, uh, and then when it comes to the communication, we'll go towards it. We may have been informing and we are, we are, uh, later on, uh, seeing our future. So right now, uh, we are, uh, giving them a report of what they are doing right now and then our future plans as well. So, okay, those are the, and then we are gathering our documents and then we are repeating our, we, uh, and it comes to ease this one. And we will give the same report.
My last question to that now is your building. Because the building can only take so many students. And you know how I am as a chair. I won't be a chair forever. But as long as I'm a chair, we will not have a school duplicate public school, meaning you will not have an overcrowding, you will not have a lack of attention to the student. And that is a big reason why I really push for the CAPS. You are aware of this. The CAP for me is a, I don't want it to be eight hundred students. And then the lack of attention per student for the teacher ratio. I don't want it to repeat itself because then we're just doing stuff like everybody else. So my question to you is have you had this in plan?
Yes, it is. We have plans and we, we have addressed it in terms of work programs and how much, uh, uh, how many teachers will we need to be able to extend to that, that level, that deepening within that, uh, the preferred, um, level of student to, teacher to student ratio. Uh, all of that is going to be there. Again, uh, we will have that, uh, available. It's, a lot of it's just really in the, in the show because viewers, our future planning. And we have been looking to be able to get more specifics. We will be able to provide that information.
And to add to that, for the record, will you be moving? And to add to that, for the record, will you be moving?
Well, we plan to stay.
Okay.
And we plan to stay as long as possible.
Okay, okay. And I'll leave it all to you because that's why you have board of trustees and we do not repeat on that. And I remind you that any council members, as Mr. Pena, you all know, I do not, the law does not allow the council to get into the board of trustees because there's a lot of bureaucracy as it is on our, you know, with regards to the remuneration. And so I like you guys to, the beauty about the charter schools is that you have a board of trustees and they basically dictate how that school is run to the best of their ability, right? And to the powers that may be. But as long as the money is coming from the people of Guam and Guam legislature, just keep in mind, Ron, that you are fully aware that I'm gonna have to come, we would come up with the dollar amount because I may have to expand the dollar amount, the scaffolding and everything will grow for Sipa. So I believe that. I will be meeting with Sipa's people, I guess, more often because we're looking at giving you a fiscal year just to prepare our preparation before this coming year's budget.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll be prepared for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
What's the student future rating? One to twenty-five? Or one to twenty-five for six graders, but for secondary, I'm impressed. So one to twenty-four, a ninety-four, a seven degree, or eighty-three, something like that.
No, please, please.
That sounds a bit steep, right?
No, please, it's fine.
Absolutely. We, I think the programs that are gonna be put into the legislature will definitely create that. But I think that's within the plans that we will prepare for the council.
Is it probably close around that, one to twenty-five?
It's like a trajectory. That's one class out of eight sixth grade classes. That's the biggest class they have, which is one to twenty-five. The rest of the sixth grade classes are about twenty-one. Right? So it was really big because we had a lot of transfers in the past two months since the semester started. So that's why that class specifically moved.
And for clarification, you're gonna expand eventually a year or so? But that's not this, that's not this position. You have a renewal.
Yeah, for teachers, right?
That's hopefully, right? That's the expectation because then if you don't, then you're going right back to doing exactly what the public school is doing.
Absolutely. We, I think in terms of how we're implementing new programs, they will be able to alleviate that, or actually lower that teacher to student ratio. Again, the spur of, the growth spur to be experienced was just now, just the fact that they came out.
Just the numbers.
Just the numbers, yeah.
The reason I ask that because when I was in a public school system, the union always kept the student to teacher ratio practically low, but the Board of Education tried to keep it high because they lacked teachers. And sometimes they get around it by saying, the teacher, okay, you have an overload. You know, they said the union contract was twenty-five. Then somebody comes and says, hey, you know, that twenty-nine, the teacher, okay, instead, the overload is okay. Is that in your system?
As far as I see.
You should police for that.
Yeah, so actually, I made an amendment that the class size cannot go over twenty-five. I constantly talk to our chief of operations and I am asking the name this year, we need to make sure, because my opinion is one to fifteen. Again, because of the big influx of students coming in and then of course with GUE giving raises to the teachers, a lot of, we had eight teachers we went to DUE. And so with this lack of teachers, then we had to accommodate for all the students. But we don't want to turn away students. And so I asked, I go, what can we do? Again, I talked to you, Madam Chair, but our limit is, we're always communicating with that. We don't want, that's really our limit. But I'm always pushing on the ratio of one to twenty, one to fifteen, that's our. So I do look at that every year and always move on as a complete stack.
Again, I can add just a little bit to that too. Even with that student, the highest student to teacher ratio, again, we were able to win a lot of competitions in terms of national history. We did, I think we were champions last year. We did well again in course, in math, maths, and everything else that we're really trying to achieve here in terms of the students' progress. I think that's big volumes. And going forward to make sure that the student ratio doesn't become an issue. At the same time, the quality of the teaching and the quality of what the kids learn is really paramount.
Yeah. We have all that.
Actually, for me, you know, like the charter school, you guys, I mean, the student ratio is not bad at one to twenty-five because basically you got a group of motivated students. Where in public school, they got from the very low, very high IQ and frustrating. Yeah, the low level get ignored. Well, we are.
Our project-based, our project-based kind of environment actually sort of works. Again, we don't want the big number of project-based, we do group work. But also we have a redundancy client in there where it does go within twenty-five. We actually do have TAs on standby. So we would send them to assist that teacher who has every ability. And so here we say one to twenty-five because we're looking at a primary teacher versus the class. But when the teacher requests for assistance, then we always have those TAs available to come and assist, help implement the classroom, or even help implement the projects that are in the classroom.
So again, as for clarification, so you're planning to go into ten, nine to twelve? Or you're planning to elementary first before you? For the fifth, what do you?
So we plan to expand and as being very critical in terms of like expanding, we need data. And so the purpose is we don't want to say when you go to nine to ten and there's no data coming in, so we're for that. And so our team is always looking at whether four and fifth, four fifth, or nine and ten, whether we expand. Again, there's always that, you know, you want, you can hit the ceiling of how far. You don't want to expand and then there's no one coming in, right? We want to expand and grow where we're constantly providing the best education. So I can't necessarily say where, four, four five, nine, ten, but we're gonna grow slowly in the direction where the people of Guam or the kids are asking for. And so we look for that.
This is your planning stage? For each of the transition, you could say, for elementary to be on the gen, then to the high school?
Yes, it's in our application. As a very last page, you'll see the future planning and how we want to address that. So hopefully you have a chance to see all that.
I did, that's why I'm very, I'm very, I reckon we were gonna go to IPO today. But it doesn't work that way. So my council will go and then we'll take it from there. I did need it and so that's why I brought my book.
Okay, thank you.
And I was.
And of course, funding. Yes, of course. I mean, it was. But also, again, is in our, we listen to the legislature and they always say, you need to find some funding outside of this come from. And so that idea of working with community, idea of working with businesses is a very great idea. That's what we're looking at in terms of expanding. The different programs we've mentioned is how do we leave these high order students aside is because these partnerships will help us. We get the funding, but also we get side rooms and facility usage and so forth. We don't, Sipa, this campus is our main campus, but with the partnerships, we see bringing our programs to these other places as well so that we can leave these.
Just a little about those data.
The data? Yeah.
Friends, come on in. We'll be recording, so that gets over here.
You know, in the public school, I'm not familiar with the, I mean, I didn't see it here in Guam, maybe a little bit, but in general, they, there were some because of the data. Some of the teachers were cheating the data. So, you know, the orders, the teach were not, they looked like it was scoring. I, then they passed the school system, they were not it because the teachers were fixing the test so they could get funding.
Well, I mean, with our academic achievement here, we ensure it. And of course, we are standard for both.
No, I just said, I'm not saying.
We have.
Be aware of that. You know, like some of the teachers, if they, hey, this is my group of students, they have to meet the data.
No, we do their part.
I'm sure then that they had to do something to that data. It might be a hint of what.
Sir, we are doing experimental tests, so of course we have JCP since JCP was moved from GUE. So we are waiting for the SBAC, this is where they're passing on this, yes, over. We are, we are combining or we are using externally. So we look the law so, barely, or we need these students, or we have the workers. Or what level is, will be our students.
No, the best way is to outside.
Yes, that's the same. We have to say.
So it's one to twenty-five.
Can I say for the record? Because I kind of feel here we're going against, and I get this.
No, I'm not getting.
As for the record, I am a product of public school. And we had 795 people when I graduated in UCF. So we came up very good. So I mean, I feel that our class of seventy-six was a very extremely great class. And we just had the gatewood as part of that, as Dr. Rose, part of that seventy-six group. So I just say, if you have the chance to balance this in case, then by all means, yes.
Thank you, thank you, council members. I want to say one thing for sure. I'm a product of private school. I'm a product of private school. My kids, when I was with POE, when I was elected board, remember, my kids were in public school. That's why I ran for the board. Because my, we know this, my son fell through the cracks. And I wasn't the typical mom that would say, okay, I'll give it to the professionals. I was there, I got involved, I stepped in. I was not happy. What did I do? I ran on the local district. I did that because I was just that kind of parent. I came in and I fought for a committee and we were on that DUE elected board. I fought for one committee because I wanted to fix the problem. Okay, it was a madhouse, but I did it. And I said, I did that, I've accomplished. So with that said, I'm gonna say now with charter schools, I came into charter school when I became on the council as a vice chair. Long story short, as you know, I had to learn quick. That became chair, I had to learn quicker. I went before the legislature and I know, we know this, okay? You know, since I've been the chair, I'm a very supporter of each charter school. Each and every charter school. I will fight to the now, before the legislature, to support this. And I will tell you, the charter schools have very little money, okay? And we're not gonna say against this because we, at the end of the day, public school students and charter school students are students of Guam. But at the end of the day, you know, like the senators always say, do you know what you keep saying? Give me, give me, give me. Charter schools, we stay, you understand us, we stay in the course as long as I've been chair at seven. And some of you come before me and say, Mr. Pena, can we do it seven five, eight? I said, no, it's not realistic. We're gonna have to learn to work within our means. Work within our means. So I did tell you that under the budget for this fiscal year, we went seven five. The legislature always supports charter schools. Because I told you, as long as we have our datas, we have our justifications, we have, sure we have problems. And I'm not gonna try and this shiny, shiny picture. We have our problems. Shortfall, sometimes you have the principal, I know that charter schools usually will never work, Mr. Camacho, because I know that charter schools, you could be the school administrator, the CFO, and the janitor. I've learned this, I've been to the schools, I've seen it, I've seen it happen. And this is why it works. Because it's a humbling experience. Because the goal at the end of the day is the quality of education that you provide to these students. Okay? So with this said, I want you to understand that when I or Felly is calling you and she's pressing you down, because I'm on Felly's butt, I'm like, I want this now. Because I'm not gonna tell that senator, wait till tomorrow, I want the data now if you want your money. And so sometimes I have to be that tough. But rest assured, I've already made it very clear that we're going to push a little more this year because it's been tough. Like you said, you have how many teachers just quit and went to DUE because they pay more? That's another thing, you know? All those factors. In other words, we do a lot less for real good education. And so we've just had Mon Carmel come on board. And my important thing is how do new people get paid on time? This is why I set the limit and the standards about getting, turning it in at a certain time because I follow a DOA. If I have to call the director, sometimes that, it happens, but it is what it is. And so this is why with the accreditation that I asked my council members to please read your stats and whatever questions because we will have one more work session, whether it be a Zoom or whatever it may be, and then we'll go move for a vote. Now this is the time to ask, is there anyone else that'd like to support and like to come and testify before Sipa? Thank you, Mr. Pena, for being patient.
Have you heard, I think you've heard, I know it's a lot, so I'm not gonna stand over there and.
Just to tell this guy, because they mentioned private school, public school, and I'm a VOTTE school. No, I graduated from VOTTE and I was making more as an electronic engineer than when I became a school teacher.
You just took my speech. Actually, I had a friend, a fellow, when he walked across and he handed that philosophy, you know, teach me and, or tell me, right? And then I forget that it's the VOTTE, it's the VOTTE. That's what I like, it was the best thing we did and the worst thing, right? But not, nobody wants closing VOTTE in a, and then not admitting that mistake and reopening it because of the fact that, you know, I don't hire them. I have classmates, I'm not as old, but I have classmates that went to VOTTE and did very, very well. And, you know, we generally refer to that whole era as the SRF era, right? Because they were more than many common students.
Yeah, around the VOTTE phenomenon, that leadership in the SRF. I went, I almost worked it while I turned it down because I had to contest, he said I was good for serving. But my view was electronics, I scored higher. So that's why it's.
Well, I was just going to say, in addition to that, you know, as you know, one of the few things about moms that we hear, reputation, we hear. And it's not any individual who are bad actors, it's reputation. And Sipa's reputation is excellent, I mean, nothing, nothing less than that. And I don't think to learn a single thing, just saying that even in law, you know, reputation evidence is a symbol of court, but individual acts are not. And the reason is because, you know, a bad day, a good day, that really doesn't describe your reputation. And their reputation speaks for itself. They've been very helpful with us also.
Thank you, that's nice to know.
Yeah, no, really, they've been very, very supportive, helpful, answered any questions we've asked. And we kind of are going to people.
Thank you, Sipa.
I want to.
That is very nice.
I'm hoping you can learn more.
Well, we learn more.
No.
It's a learning experience, yeah, on the wrong ways, yeah.
It's just, I don't know, any of this, you know, with our, with our people's idols are a bit, or classmates, or now we're being, you know, true. Science fascines our people. And it's a lot of things you can't get through as quick as others. But hands-on stuff, oh, that's our portage. We just have to realize that there's many different ways to teach and many different things that interest people. You got jazz, you got hard rock, and the same in education. And it may, it may be against the conventional, I have a school in Boston saying this, but the traditional Western system of education. But the truth is that it is different. And so, you know, what they offer, I know the charter schools offer, I think is really an amazing opportunity for all of the students. Benefits all of us, even those who are much older, because we all benefit when the students, when they stay on Guam. Because of the fact that, you know, we are going through, kind of is, maybe not the equivalent, Senator would know more than me, but I think kind of the equivalent of an SRF renaissance again because of the military bill. So it's a good job, so on the day, and we've got a lot of companies here that have said what we prefer. That is, we could do so much more for the paper, because we don't have the local paper. And so it's win-win for everybody. I won't take any more.
Thank you, my first. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns or comments?
I think she signed in. I'm not sure, for her, I think she signed in for, she was just signing in, not for to speak.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Is there any other?
Yes, I'm sure that there are testimonies that were given. And I was just. Well, it's just a bit with respect to your time.
Yes, this will be noted, thank you. Okay, so just for the record, it is 6:32 PM. We've completed our public hearing. And I thank you all for being here, taking the time out to be here. And we will get back to Sipa very soon in regards to your accreditation. Thank you, have a good evening.